Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray, Jerem, Milton. Mr. President.
Please rise for the pledge or remain standing for the dedication by Councilmember Gary Garnett.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
There's some good news this week. It has been an opportunity to partake in an event yesterday afternoon where council and several members of the city and the public had an opportunity to open up a brand-new public-access television station. It so happens to be in my district. Great event to keep public access alive. I think we should be thankful for that. And we may also take a moment to remember those families that lost loved ones from all the violence this past week around the country. Let's have a good meeting.
City Clerk certifies publication of daily record on April 11th. Note for brief Council and regular City Council meeting April 15, 2014. A current copy of me exact is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
The zoning ordinance is final agreement board attached items five through seven and will bring up 34 for the public hearing side. Five is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 10th Street and Capitol Avenue from downtown service district to central business district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is resolution at the replat transmitted herewith entitled the Capitol District is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is the subdivision agreement is hereby approved. And 34, which is ordinance on second reading, is an ordinance approving a redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement between the city and Capitol District to implement the Capitol District tax and financing redevelopment project plan.
Public hearings on items number five, six, seven, and 34 are today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Really simply here to answer questions regarding the plat, the rezoning, and the subdivision agreement with respect to the redevelopment agreement. The same from a legal perspective, I do have Mike Moylan here, the developer, to give you kind of a overview and status report of where we are on the project moving forward, but this is really the next big step towards closing and coming out of the ground and going vertical. So we're excited about that. So from a legal perspective, you have questions, me, but for now, I'll let Mike kind of give you an overview of where we are and kind of his updated status report.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to come share what we're doing at the Capitol District. This here is a rendering.
Mike, your name and address for the reference.
Sorry. Mike Moylan with Shamrock Development, 1414 Harney, Omaha, 68102. Thank you. Excuse me. We are awarded the RFP from the city of Omaha to develop this parcel of ground. And this here is a rendering showing the Marriott Hotel. And this is northbound on 10th, westbound on Capitol. And this was one of the original renderings we submitted for the RFP. And our hotel is basically exactly the same as it is now. So we're very happy that what we originally submitted is coming through. It's been refined quite a few times over the previous months and years, but regardless, we're happy that it all came together. So what we're ultimately going to end up with here is this is 10th Street going northwest on Capitol to 12th. We have a 335-room full-service Marriott Hotel with a 12,000-square-foot ballroom and another 6,000 or 7,000 square feet of meeting space. And adjacent to this, we have an office building that's going to be fronting on Capitol Avenue. And it's going to have about 100,000 to 125,000 square feet of office space and 25,000 square feet of retail on the main floor. The reason there's a little variance in the office, the second floor will be service, retail, or retail, or office. It's we're designing it to be a little bit flexible depending on the types of users. We have a 250-unit market-rate apartment building on the west side up here. And on the north piece, we have a parcel that is currently parking, that we are now incorporating it into as a parking element for the entire Capitol District. We have parking plans to build some underneath the plaza or a parking structure over here, and we're finalizing those designs and costs right now at this point. And then the whole first floor will be a retail plaza that will consist of about 80,000 square feet of entertainment retail space. It's going to be more restaurant-oriented, and the plaza will have be about the size of a football field. And it's going to be designed to encourage for programming, event planning, and you know, just basically to help incorporate as part of the hotel as well, too, to have events in the plaza. So that's basically the quick summary. I'm not sure how much I certainly can answer questions.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Ms. Hadley.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, just appearing on behalf of the planning department, asking for your approval of the redevelopment agreement, which will implement the Capitol District redevelopment, TIF redevelopment project plan that was approved August of last year. Again, it calls for up to $35 million in tax increment financing and based on an estimated total project of up to about $205 million. So I would just ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seen none of the opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Moylan.
Yes.
Go ahead and restate your name.
Michael Moylan, Shamrock Development.
If you could put the picture back up, please.
How about the site plan one? Yes.
Just focusing. Okay, on the retail and office, how have you done in terms of initial reaching out to various people who might be interested?
Good question. We've done a great job. The response has been better than we expected as well, too. The way this shows here is it looks like it's two buildings connected by link. We've actually made it one long footprint. And so what it's doing, it's playing well into large company footprints that's going to be 250 by 100 feet deep, and it really lays out well for large company footprints. We have suspects and prospects of about 125,000 square feet already, and I don't want to overstate that, you know, we're that far along, but the downtown marketplace has gotten quite a bit better for office space mainly because some of the bigger buildings were turned into residential, which made a big difference. And then, of course, the economy's gotten better. Union Pacific has expanded, and some of the other downtown companies have expanded. And there's nationally speaking, there's some of the big players really want to see an environment like this for their employees. So it's not just an office building. It's part of the plaza. It's connected to parking. It's connected to a lifestyle. It's connected to a urban office lifestyle, too. So from that perspective, we've gotten the best response and mostly larger full-floor plate users.
That's very encouraging. On the apartment, how many units?
250 market-rate apartments on the west side.
Okay. And are those mainly like for business-oriented types where it's one-bedroom studio, or is it more family-oriented?
We went, we did not do any studios. We felt that our location in the plaza, once again, the synergy of the entire district, was going to be a little bit more upscale. And so we did not do any studios as of yet. We may be forced to in the final designs or whatever, but for the most part, we're going for one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. We have two other residential things under development right now. The Barker Building, we're proud to say is now 100% leased with 48 units on 15th and Farnham. And we have a prospect for the last commercial bay. And then on 15th and Jackson, we have 75 units under construction, and those floor plans, that was new construction as well. They're going to be similar to these over here. But we get to offer things that some of the older buildings can't with balconies and location and the true floor plan being designed from the ground up really can help make them efficient. And so the market is still very strong for residential downtown. And to maybe answer your question a little bit further, it's everybody but a family. My wife and I are raising our kids downtown, but we're a little bit out of the ordinary. The rest, most people aren't coming down with young children. So but the rest of the prospects for it is just about anybody else. And so it's a wide array.
Not that it couldn't be, but I'm just trying to get a feel for your vision. Great project. Thank you for looking at Marriott as, you know, the host for the hotel. At one time, the one that we had now wasn't a Marriott, and then it got switched out. But I think they provide a good product. And I'm tickled to death that you're willing to do this. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much. We're proud and happy that it's all come together so well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, I don't need any questions answered or anything like that. I just want to, I just want to thank you for continuing to invest, not only in my district specifically this time, but in the downtown area, in the downtown core. There's some major things happening, major things going on, not only in many of our districts, but you know, downtown as well. And I just wanted to thank you for keep, for continuing to invest in our downtown core. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you for the kind words. My whole team appreciates it much because it's a lot of work, but we enjoy it thoroughly.
I understand. It was, it was a, it was laborious, but it was a labor of love, and I just wanted you to know we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. We're equally as excited. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
On items five through seven.
On five, five through seven.
Yes. Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Five through seven, passed seven to zero. Item number eight, resolution at the Plum Ridge plat entitled Pacific Village located northwest 192nd and Pacific Street. Attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation final plat is hereby authorized. A, planning board and planning department recommend approval. B is a formal protest petition. C is a legal opinion submitted by the law department. And D is communications opposing.
Public hearing on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Doug Halverson. I'm a landscape architect with Olson Associates, 2111 South 67th Street in Exarban. I want to thank the planning staff and the planning board for reviewing and working with us on this project. We got a seven-zero vote at the planning board, and we have brought information to explain this project to you and try to answer some of the questions and anticipate some of the issues that might be coming up, so. So this is an aerial photograph of the intersection of 192nd and Pacific. 192nd obviously goes north. Pacific runs the east and west. I've colored an area in kind of a peach color. That is, this is a 10-acre mixed-use corner. That means that there's 10 acres that can be mixed use, obviously, and the area that is in color is now 10 acres. About four or five years ago, there was a plan that came forward called Tuscan Ridge that used the 20% variance. And they came in and did a plan that showed some commercial and mixed use on the subject property that we're now showing. This project does not have any mixed use in it. This is a pure residential project. It's R6 zoning, which is considered low-density multifamily. We have 205 units on 9.75 acres. This was a 10-acre piece. This was, this area is still characterized by some large acreages of 10 acres each. But these 10 acres are being incorporated into the city, and this is one of the first ones that's been incorporated or planned to be incorporated. So the, the plan you see is 9.7 acres, like I said, 205 units of a three-story market-rate apartments with integral garages. And what that means is when you pull into the garage, the garage door goes down behind you. You open the door. You walk into a hallway. You go upstairs to go home. So there's a very popular product. This is an enlargement of that same area. I'm going to orient it with north up again. So Pacific Street is east-west. 192nd is north. I've indicated a pink line that runs through that. That is the access easement through this property to the continuing of the 10-acre pieces. We like connectivity. We want to make connecting connections from 192nd to the various properties that are going on. This intersection someday will be a right-in, right-out only intersection. There will be a median down 192nd. We completely understand that. Right now, it's a full intersection. Over time, the property that is due north of this will provide access, not necessarily exactly in that dashed line, but will connect through to this project. And this will be the full access. That's the quarter-mile access. Gray-Fawn Plaza that feeds the other 10-acre pieces will eventually go away. So that's how this project becomes connected and becomes part of the city. Public Works is going to be speaking to this also if you ask them, I believe. They spoke at the planning board. This comes from the city of Omaha. 192nd and Pacific is a 20,000-vehicle-a-day intersection. 2008, 2009, 2010, up to 13. That's the number of crash histories, two and three per year. I happen to live at the corner of 168th and Oak by legacy there. That's a 21,000 vehicles a day. In order to be put on the list of the 100 worst intersections, we've got to get to this number of crashes. Nobody likes a crash. We get that. But this is not anywhere near getting on the list of bad There's also probably going to be a question on drainage. Explain how the site works a little bit here. Again, with north up. It's the same configuration as this, where the, where the units are. So this site has 25 or 20 feet of grade change across it. Goes from 70 to 50, pretty standard in west Omaha. What we're going to do is take the elevation of 62 and split the difference. This product with all those garages requires a very flat site. So we're going to, in essence, create a table right through the middle. And within that table, that flat area, there will be these stormwater quality and detention basins that will collect the water up to the 20-year storm, which is all required. This is nothing, nothing new. We're, we're following the rules. And we will have silt, silt basins, and we will have silt protection for that area. So the orange represents where the buildings are, and the blue represents where the siltation basins are located. The setbacks that are required, we're undoing, you know, there's, we're doing a berm and fence combination around the 30-foot buffer, and the landscaping and all of that has been approved also. So we have a list from the planning department of about, well, there's 14 issues here that are on the list. Frankly, nine of them are just standard language that we're going to put on the final plat. So we're going to widen Pacific Street. We agree to that. We're going to coordinate with the planning department on the access easements through the property. We've agreed to do that. Basically, we've agreed to take the, remove all structures from the noise attenuation barrier. I have some, I have two garages in the noise attenuation barrier. We'll take those out. So those are the only things that will change the site plan. So I'm here to answer any questions. Also with me is Kevin Irish from Pacific Renaissance. He'll talk a little bit about the buildings and the type of units and who he sees living here. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we'll have some opposition that wants to speak today, too, so we'll reserve some time for you to respond after that if you'd like. Mr. Irish.
Hi, Kevin Irish, 5416 South 169th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. First of all, I want to throw myself on the sword a little bit. I was reticent about not contacting the city councilman to visit with you about this project, probably in my negativity. I think it was, it stands on its own. It's to the master plan, but I think I should have been down to see all of you because you would have been, would have been contacted by the opposition. And it would have been nice to arm you with some facts and, and visit with you about that. So I apologize. Most of the time, we have an attorney that does that for us. I didn't do it because I didn't realize or didn't think that we would need an attorney in this project. We found this project or shot this project out because it fits the master plan. It was a site that we just didn't think there'd be any issues traffic-wise. It fits to the master plan with 250 units on the corner. We're only going with 205, so we're 45 units less. And we had a neighborhood meeting. We sent out 35 letters. Four, five people attended, four property owners. So we didn't really think it was going to be, I mean, it was a big deal because it's, it's in their backyard. However, a couple of points I might want to make is that we live across the street from the YMCA, the Armbruce YMCA. And when we bought our house, there was a vacant lot across the street. What I find inherent, an inherent risk that people assume when they either build a house, buy a house across from an empty 10-acre parcel, especially in west Omaha, that something is going to be built on that property at some point in the future. It might be commercial, it might be a gas station, it might be apartments. So if, if I was building a home and I had a direct sideline to this property, it would have been inherent on me to do my due diligence to see if, you know, what could possibly be built there. So this shouldn't be a major surprise. Doug, do I turn this on, Mike?
Bill, come on.
Is it on automatic?
Yeah.
When we talk about apartments, for some reason, people seem to think apartments are bad. But what we've done, and as I mentioned this to the neighbors at the meeting, the architect that we're, we've hired is Studio 951 out of Lincoln, Nebraska. His name's Dave Johnson. He's done a lot of the projects around, most notably, you'll notice the Lanahaw project. And I use that as an example because it's kind of in our backyard. It's at 185th and Center, per se. We're at 192nd and Pacific, so it's pretty close. With that being said, in the marketplace, that would probably be our, somewhat of our competition. And these apartments, as Doug had mentioned, do, do have integral garages. These are, these are high, high-end apartments with the granite countertops. Now, one thing that we would do with our buildings that you don't see maybe around town is that we have elevators in each building. When you get to my ripe age, we don't like to walk steps, and I'd like to see, I like to see elevators. I think that's, that sets us apart in the marketplace. And the, and having the integral garages is nice because of, we all like to park in a garage and walk up, not, well, garages don't, you can see them on the right and left on the lower level. For every unit, it does, still sends a nice message to what our units look like. The, the higher rents of these apartments, the person, if you took the rent that they're paying and extrapolated that to what a house they could buy, it'd be in the upper $250,000, $275,000 they could purchase. So the people that are living in these apartments might be building a new home, it might be individuals, they might have, they might have kids for all we know. They're typically one and two bedrooms. We may have some one-bedrooms with dens, but that's, that's a typical, that's a typical look. The clubhouse has meeting areas. We have, I didn't bring all the pools because we've all seen pools and we've seen, we've seen different things. But, but we didn't, we didn't have the plans designed because we wanted to have city council approval first. We don't want to spend the amount of money that we would with the architect to be, till the project was, was finalized. So I think I've answered. We've answered the questions. I think the traffic is non-issue. I think living next to apartments, while, that's just a fact of life. That's what the corner has been master-planned for. And, and we will, we'll continue to meet, put the birmingham up, do the fencing. And once again, I'd like to apologize for not meeting with you as you have been probably bombarded by opposition. I wish I would have gotten to you first so you would have had some arming. And so for that, I once again apologize. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Seen none of the opponents.
My name is Bruce Kuhn. I live at 19330 Pacific Street, and I'm here in opposition to this proposal. See if I can get this up here correctly. I live directly adjacent to this property right here. I've lived there with my three children and my wife for 17 years, and we're opposed to this project for, for a number of reasons. I've sent you all an email, and hopefully you've been able to read that, and then we met this morning. My concerns are, first of all, that this is a, this is a high-density development, especially for our area. These will be 40 to 50 feet high in comparison to all the one- and two-family residential areas that are already in this, in this region. The, this land already sits five feet, five to seven feet above grade of Pacific Street, and they're going to have to increase that, I think Doug said, 10 or 15 feet to level this out. And so when we put 40 or 50 feet on top of 10 and 15, you, you can, you can figure that number out yourself. This kind of development, we also don't feel like this is needed in our area. We have over 2,000 apartments that are currently either proposed or being built at this time within a mile and a half of this area. And so this is sprawl of apartment complexes that we don't feel is needed. And we'll have someone else show you a little map of those areas. And I know that some of you have apartments going in And I know that some of you have apartments going in your districts and you already understand some of, some of those things. We also are concerned regarding the infrastructure in this area, that the roads, which are, you know, basically two-lane road on Pacific Street, may not be able to handle this increased density. We're going to have another 400, actually, I think they have 380 parking stalls, and these cars are not all parked in garages like you just have seen. Right along the side of my, my property, right here, these are all open. There are no garages for those, for those vehicles. Anyway, we're going to add 380 more cars to this area, and we are very concerned about the safety of our children and people going to these schools. I don't know where they got their numbers on crashes, but I can give you two. My daughter totaled her car less than a year ago at this intersection, and the car that hit her also was totaled. My two daughters were driving to school, and there was just a wreck there this past weekend. So, this is, this is, these numbers are very deceiving. There's not just two crashes there. We see them fairly often, and I think if you ask the neighbors, they can attest to We also disagree that this is really in agreement with the master plan. Dan Park, who is one of our neighbors, was one of the first people on the planning board who helped develop the master plan. And his discussion with us was that this is what the master plan was intended to stop, these kind of things where you are placing something that doesn't fit into a neighborhood on that, on those corners and in these places. And we think the master plan has been, has been messed up because, because of these kind of things. And I'll have, I'll have Jerry talk to this. So, those are the things that I think we're most concerned about, and we would appreciate your support and, and your vote.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
My name is Fred Baker. I live at 1214 South 194th Street. You heard the proposer talk about the letters that were sent out to the neighborhood. Well, unfortunately, I live 300 yards away from this project, and I was outside that boundary. So, in the Plum Ridge Villas Development, which is where I live, in Pacific Pines, which we are within, very few of those neighbors were notified of the proposal of this project. There was a comment made about the poor representation of those that did receive the letters as far as the homeowners' meeting. I assure you, if more people would have been notified, more people would have been there. He also made a statement that his competition was the Lanahaw Project, which is right here, just west of 180th and Center. What you see on here, and I apologize for the messiness of this, but I had, I did not have time because I didn't find out about this meeting, this proposal, soon enough. But what you see here, let me move it up just a little bit, are 3,846 apartment units that are either existing, proposed, or under construction within two miles of this intersection. If you look at the drawing, many of those, and this, right here, is 192nd Street. And if you look at this drawing, you see that the majority of those apartments are along 192nd Street. Bruce talked about concern for traffic and safety. My wife and I walk the neighborhoods very, very frequently. It is currently very dangerous to walk across Pacific Street. Projects like this is going to increase that danger. I'm a bicyclist. I very often go out and ride my bicycle, and unfortunately, there are no bike paths in this part of town reasonably, reasonably close, so I have to get on the streets to get to those bike paths. It's just a very, very dangerous situation the way it currently is. It is a two-lane street. The street maintenance is not the best. There are potholes and all that along the edge where I'm forced to ride my bicycle, and the degradation is just getting worse. I really wonder how this apartment complex, if it is approved, will go forward and be economically viable because of the, the numbers of competitions in the immediate area. They all seem to be coming before the city council as they are proposed and saying, "We're targeting this level of occupant," and they all seem to be the same. So, we are concerned about the development itself, what it might be doing to our market values of our properties, but more importantly, what is the, the big concentration of apartments in this immediate area of Omaha doing to the city of Omaha? So, thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
My name's Susan Ramsey. I live at 2230 South 183rd Circle. I live in the ridges neighborhood that's just southeast of this proposed development, and I am currently the president of our neighborhood's homeowners' association. So, I'm here representing approximately 750 families in our neighborhood. A couple of issues that I wanted to address, some that have been touched on a little bit, so I'll just be brief, but definitely the traffic and infrastructure related to that. I don't know if you guys are very familiar with this area. I snapped some pictures today. There are very few areas with sidewalks. Some of the neighborhoods that have been fully developed have sidewalks outside their areas, but a lot of areas, there is no sidewalk, there's no shoulder on the road, no place really to pull over unless you just want to kind of pull off into the mud or the grass. There are no streetlights in this area, so it's not very conducive for what residential areas should support pedestrian and, you know, bicyclist and people being able to get out and walk and run safely. The intersection, let's see, let me pull this off here. Let me show you just a quick picture that I snapped. Here's the intersection of 192nd and Pacific. No turning lanes. Like I said, no streetlights. This elevated area here, that is the northwest corner where they're proposing to put the apartments. And then, if you come catty-corner over here, this is, this whole square mile from 192nd to 180th, and from Pacific down south to West Center Road, that entire square mile encompasses the ridges, and also Shadow Ridge Golf Course is within that area. So, you can see here that this is the highest point in the neighborhood, and the, most of the drainage comes off and goes south down 192nd Street. Get another map out here. So, again, this is the intersection, it's not on this map, but it would be just right here where the apartments would be built. And the drainage comes downhill and runs along 192nd Street, crosses over behind this area, which is Brookfield, it's within the ridges. And a few years ago, Public Works did an improvement project because of all the development that was taking place to the north and draining down this way. We had a big issue with drainage, stormwater runoff, silt building up. So, Public Works came and did Part One, is my understanding of a project, where they worked on these retention ponds in Pacific Point, rebuilt underneath the street here, underneath 192nd Street, and then improved a concrete culvert right here behind these homes. The second part of the project was going to be to come along here on this drainage ditch and improve this, go underneath Shadow Ridge Drive, that's the street right here, which that pipe, I've been told by Public Works, is almost completely silted in now, and then, so, and clear that out, and then eventually, it flows onto the golf course where there's another silt pond that's almost completely silted in again. And then eventually, all this runs off to the south and east and eventually ends up into, in Zurenski. But our neighborhood takes on a lot of this runoff and stormwater, so we're really concerned, especially for the residents along this western half, or western side of the neighborhood, about water building up, getting into their basements, damaging their property, when our understanding is, we already need improvements now in regard to stormwater and runoff, and yet apparently, there's no money in the budget to do that, and now we're adding even more and more. And I know that he shows retention ponds and some kind of solutions on their design, but I wonder, going back to the 14 points that they were supposed to meet per the planning board's recommendation report, are there, it says, "Provide storm sewer design computations." Include provisions for grade coordination and widening of both streets, 192nd and Pacific. Including provisions for compliance with all applicable stormwater management ordinances and policies. So, at what point is, are they required to provide some studies or some research or recommendations that, you know, anything that they do, whether it's during construction, which is a big concern, or post-construction, whatever we're left with, is going to take care of this problem and not, you know, add to it, not make it worse? The other issues that I wanted to touch on, again, with infrastructure, are, you know, well, I mentioned the roads and I mentioned the stormwater. The other issue that I wanted to mention was, the houses in, or buildings even, businesses that are in this area, don't exceed two stories. Everything's one and two stories in this area. So, this being the high point in this, like, probably a mile radius, maybe mile and a half, it's not only the high point, but now they're proposing putting three stories on top of that. My understanding is a developer on the other side of 192nd to the east, just across from this proposed development, he took it upon himself to fit more within what's being built in that area and took his apartments to two-story with the garages, as he described, and made eight-unit buildings. So, the buildings are smaller, they're like four to 5,000 square feet buildings, two-story, and they really do fit in nicely with the neighborhood as opposed to these giant, tall buildings just looming over everyone. You know, the last issue that I wanted to bring up, too, was, again, it's been talked about, so I'll just be brief, but just, it feels a little bit like the Wild West out there now, like all of a sudden, everybody is just grabbing everything they can, coming up with any kind of plan, whether they really intend to follow through with it and build something, or maybe they just want to turn around and flip the property. But I think we're becoming saturated, and I find it hard to believe that there's not maybe development like this that could happen on east side of town, or the north, or the south, you know? There's, it just feels like we're getting swamped out west with overdevelopment without supporting infrastructure. So, I question not having infrastructure that can support this, which we're already deficient. That should be an important criterion, I would think, to consider before approving this. So, the last picture I want to show you, I know Bruce mentioned an accident that took place this weekend. Here's one that happened today at lunch, same intersection. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Other opponents that want to speak today?
I'm Barbara Coleman. I am a board member of ESU. I also live in this district. I drive it every day and know the congestion is already terrible, but I also am the voice for children. Those classrooms out there are already congested. My grandson attends school in that neighborhood. It grew from one to five this year. So, you said you're expecting children, you mentioned that in your presentation. Let's consider the crowded schools and the safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
Travis Teeter, 19309 Briggs Street. I'm actually the president of the Pacific Point Homeowners' Association. We're in the neighborhood located directly to the south of the proposed development, so we're down here. Once again, just to kind of echo what was said earlier, I actually, my home is actually about three blocks south of the, the proposed development. We received no notice myself because we're outside of the range, but we found out about it from some of the other people within the neighborhood. So, I did attend the informational meeting and kind of got, got information from the developer as far as what he was proposing. As far as accidents, we are currently replacing, right here along Pacific Street, we have two trees that we're replacing as a neighborhood association that have both been hit by cars that have driven off the road and taken out, I mean, big, established pine trees, 20, 25-foot trees. So, there are plenty of accidents that occur in that area. The concerns that we have as far as a neighborhood association go, we have a large amount of families with young children in the area. We, on our street, we frequently have children running all over the place, as do the other streets around us. The concern is, any additional traffic that this will bring to the area, that's going to further impede the safety of families and children in the area. I know people have already talked about kind of access along Pacific Street or lack thereof at the current time with sidewalks and such and shoulders on the roads. The developer had told us at one point in time that they were planning on doing a traffic study. We haven't heard anything about that, whether that has been performed or not performed at this, at the current point in time. And the, the other concern, I guess I have as a parent of a, of young children, is this building right here is actually a daycare center. The access point for this is right across the street. You're now putting an additional 400 vehicles entering and exiting. Frequently, there is a stoplight at the intersection here at 192nd and Pacific, so you're going to have cars backing up here to turn north onto Pacific. Frequently, they're probably going to try and speed in front of a car, try and, and kind of hit the gap and, and beat someone to the punch to get, to get on 192nd. It's a dangerous area. You have a large concentration of small children in the area, people dropping their children off to daycare, picking them up from daycare. And I guess the, the final thing, I, in, in looking into this, I've kind of researched things and looked into things, and the master plan of the city, whether, some people question whether this follows the master plan or doesn't follow the master plan, but kind of sprinkled throughout the master plan of the city, there's a thing in there that, that kind of struck me and said that the vision of the master plan is that Omaha must be a community committed to providing and maintaining a high quality of life for all of its people. It seems to me, talking to neighbors in our area, in our neighborhood, neighbors and surrounding neighborhoods, there's, there's no neighborhood support for this at all. So, if you don't have any support from the neighborhood, from the surrounding people, the people that live in the area, I mean, how can you, how can you say that this is improving the quality of life of people in the area, of people in the city? Because you're, you're directly going against what people want, what people desire, what people are hoping for. I understand that the, the area is, is zoned for residential area, residential use, but is it necessarily zoned for apartments? Why, why could we not have more single-family homes in the area to, to kind of go along with what's going on in the other, the other three corners as well? So, thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
I'm Patricia Cantu. I live at 19251 Pierce Street, and I have spoken to many of you before, and I did want to thank Mr. Festerson and Mr. Thompson for getting back to me so promptly with my, with my email. I was really impressed getting responses on Sunday night. I just wish to reiterate the danger to the community. I am concerned, having come from Los Angeles, where, as my husband puts it, "It took us 20 minutes to get out of our neighborhood, much less 20 minutes to get across the city." To move to a community that has semi-rural transportation, but yet is being built up in a very densely populated manner, it's a prescription for problems. Not only will people not be able to get out of their neighborhood, but it's already dangerous for people to be a pedestrian. Frankly, I don't walk in the neighborhood. I think, and I wouldn't bicycle. I think you're taking your life in your hands to do that because people aren't looking for you. Safety is critical, and I have nothing against apartment dwellers. Most of us have been there. We may go back to that lifestyle, no problem. But where you have an infrastructure that is not suitable for the current level of traffic, and then you multiply that, and I don't pretend that this is going to be, you know, something earth-shattering in the neighborhood. We all know 300 cars, you know, 50 leaving between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning, whatever. It's not going to kill the neighborhood, but it's every incremental increase that will, that does affect the neighborhood. And please, without the infrastructure, it's a prescription for damage and personal damage and property damage. And I know nobody wants that. Nobody wants it for our children, our grandparents, any of us. But that is the result of permitting the subdivision without the adequate infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents, please. Mr. Slusky.
Good afternoon. Jerry Slusky, 87, 21 West Dodge, representing Dr. and Mrs. Kuhn, who, as mentioned, lives next door on the property. I'm not going to cover the subjects that have been covered, you've heard all of that, but I am going to cover something that, in researching the, our master plan and what maybe is the balancing act that needs to go on here, I think, so that the council can make a good decision for all the neighborhoods and for the developer. Nobody has anything against a developer or development. It's a beautiful plan. The problem is, it doesn't fit within the neighborhood, and that was said a number of times. But perhaps something else does, and maybe that's the way to balance out this decision. And I'm going to point out just a couple of things from our master plan. And please, I think we all know this, but I want to refresh our recollections that a master plan is simply a guide. It's not a rule. But our guide says this about convenience-mixed-use areas, which this corner is. The intent of the convenience-mixed-use areas is to provide goods and services at a moderate scale to nearby residences. That's really the intent of that, is to have a little shop, a little grocery store, convenience store, gasoline, a dry cleaner, et cetera. Typical facilities include convenience stores, grocery stores, gas stations, ATMs, dental buildings such as, smaller buildings. buildings such as, smaller buildings such as duplexes, townhomes, and small-scale apartments. They are allowed and encouraged to locate in convenience areas. Large-scale apartment buildings or complexes are not allowed. So what are we doing here, allowing over 200 units, monstrous, three-story, 40, 50 feet high, to sit in the middle of this neighborhood and you have two huge subdivisions and a neighbor to the west and a neighbor to the north saying, "This doesn't fit." Well, why are they here? Why are they allowed to be here? And I read this very carefully, because when it talks about what multifamily you can have in the master plan in a convenience mixed-use area, it goes down some things. If you're near Dodge Center, Maple, you can have all you want. If you're in a big commercial area, you can have all you want. But as soon as you get away from the major corridors, you're only allowed to have 100 units, unless you touch, I would like the light on, please. Unless you touch a mixed-use area, and this is mixed-use. So the mere fact that this little mixed-use with a come-and-go and about four stores is here allows this to go from 100 to 250 units, and Kevin has chosen to do 205 or whatever number of units. It's fine. Now, the purpose of the master plan for convenience mixed-use areas is clearly stated. It's a scale issue, council members. It's a scale issue. And if we're going to pass this thing and let him go develop it, but do it in 100 units, let it be two-story, let it be beautiful townhomes that are rental, that will rent very quickly, there's no product like that out there, although there are 1,700 to 2,000 other conventional apartments out there. And let's build something that really fits the neighborhood and fits the balance of this equation here today. You've got a huge group of people here, a developer here. Instead of having the balance be 200 units and, oh my God, three-story overlooking silt, et cetera, the neighborhood, let's lighten their concerns a little bit, bring it down to 100, pass this with 100, if that is what you want, to allow development to go forward. And let's have a really good community, an even better community in Omaha, based upon this corner and a decision today. You have the power and ability to do that today. Nothing in our master plan is anything other than a guide, and I believe that that going to 250 units is an error, especially in light of the language I just read to you. We would appreciate it either to vote it down or vote it through with a maximum number of units of 100. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing done, we'll give Mr. Halverson a couple of minutes if he wants to respond to anything before we ask some questions.
Thank you. Doug Halverson, 2111 South 67th Street. I think the first thing I want to address is the number of apartments that was brought up on the map that showed thousands and thousands of apartments. The City of Omaha cannot regulate whether you own a piece of property or you rent it. So, I mean, you could fill a single-family residential neighborhood full of rental homes. Okay? So what's happening is the number of apartments that they're talking about, there has been, because of the fabulous area here, people want to live here, is the fact that there's two-story apartments and other things coming into the neighborhood that meet our five regulators. So that's not the same thing as these. These are R6. R6 is allowed, 250 units, Jerry recognized that, 250 adjacent to this mixed-use area. We need density next to these mixed-use areas because that's the convenience, that's the walkability, that's what supports this small neighborhood shops. So that's, the number of apartment units aren't the same as what we're showing here. We're providing a choice. There are people who are choose, I mean, if you can afford to spend $250 on a $250,000 equal payment for a home or choose to rent, these people are choosing to rent. We all know that all people shouldn't be and don't want to be homeowners, but they want to live in a fabulous neighborhood. Kevin picked this neighborhood because of all the amenities here. There are people who want to live here for that. So Jerry's right, you know, there, this is a, an area next to mixed-use, which we can do, 250 units. I think that the traffic numbers come from the city, so I, you know, the number of crashes they show in their pictures, that, you know, I guess my information comes from the City Public Works Department. I can't think of anything else, so if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going to have closed public hearing just yet, but I know we have a light on. Mr. Thompson?
Is the public hearing still open or closed?
I haven't closed it yet, but I figured I'd defer to you now.
Thank you. Mr. Irish.
Kevin Irish, 5416 South 169th Street.
Kevin, I just need to go over a couple of things. Okay, so the area, would you put that map back up that shows the area north, where you're going to have the, yeah, right there. Okay, can you tell me what's your plan, how many acres is that north of there?
Well, this is, I believe, John and Susan Nicely's property. And Doug has drawn, how many acres of, 10. It's 10 as well, 10 acres as well.
Now, have you gotten, are you asking them to put a, a, a street egress through that property, or how far have you gotten with that?
That, that, that street there is what has been asked of us by the city, and Susan and John Nicely want that street there as well, from my understanding.
Okay. Well, a little bit of confusion, because we received an email from them saying they're against the project. So I was wondering, how much conversation have you had with them regarding the outlet that you're trying to build?
We've probably exchanged over a dozen emails. One thing that we've talked to them about is they need excess, our excess dirt, and so we've offered our excess dirt to be put over on their property as well at no charge. We haven't met personally, we've emailed at least a dozen times back and forth.
Okay. You may, you may want to follow up on that, because the council's getting a little bit of a mixed signal as to whether or not, you know, they want to work with you or not.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the next question is, you said you wanted to widen Pacific Street. Show me exactly what you're going to do.
I believe, and Doug may address this, but I think all along the frontage of our property, is that correct, Doug, has to be widened?
Doug, feel free to come back up.
Thank you. Doug Halverson. So, again, I think that shows up better on the larger scale drawing. Do you have that? Pacific Street has been widened to the standard three-lane section, so I guess this is. So the standard three-lane section-
Push it up just a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
The standard three-lane section goes from here to here. Already has been widened to the same three-lane section that 192nd has been widened to. We have to and will widen the rest of it in front of our property with the D cell lanes or the, not the, the tapers. So in essence, somewhere back in here, we're going to start widening Pacific Street, and when we get to our property line, that's where it'll be three-lane section. Standard, standard requirement of all subdivisions. When this property comes in, they'll have to widen the next piece at infinitum as you go, very similar to what happens at 168 between the mall and Lakeside Hospital.
So about half of a block you're going to widen?
Exactly.
Okay. All right.
And then to kind of clarify this a little bit, this, this, this issue here, just like in any other subdivision, we're required to stub a street into the adjoining property. How they get to, how they do this street configuration is none of our concern, and we've talked to the Nicely's about that. They just have to connect this point and this point and this point and this point. How they do it, we don't care, because when that happens, we will have circulation. And this will have circulation into this 10-acre piece and this 10-acre piece and that 10-acre piece.
Well, perhaps, planning might want to chime in on that a little bit later, but I'm a big-picture guy and I kind of like to know where I'm going, and I don't want to just do it piecemeal, so I like to have some kind of vision as to, you know, what's going to happen.
We can't force them to say this configuration, but we can, because we're going to put the first one in, that's where they must connect.
Uh huh, okay. All right. Next question had to do with, talk to me again about the meeting, either one of you. So, so five people showed up?
It would have been February, yeah, but probably would have been two weeks, three weeks, maybe a month before our planning board meeting.
Okay, in February?
Yes, it was in February.
Early, early February?
Our planning board meeting was March 5th, so it would have been mid-February.
Okay. And who did you, who did you notify?
We, we had the 35 closest neighbors, the city provides the notification for that.
35 closest neighbors, okay.
And for consistency, when, when a zoning goes out, there's a certain radius, 300 feet, not counting the right-of-ways, the city notifies those people of the rezoning. We then just mimic that and ask those people, you know, "Hey, we'd like to have a meeting with you so you know what's happening in your neighborhood."
And I'm not going to say that you didn't do that, but I'm scratching my head, because West Omaha people show. They show.
We had a large food reserve.
In fact, they show too much. And if I'm-
We had food and drink offered as well.
I'm perplexed as to why you only got five people, but maybe I can dig into that a little bit deeper. But as you can see, there are a lot of people saying that they hear that they wish, that they would have known so they could have come. And my question to you is, do you feel you've had enough citizen input? Usually on a project list just north of you, Fair, what's that? Grove Ridge and also Fire Ridge. We're talking about, Fire Ridge had about 150 people doing input, upwards of 200. And so, and we finally ended up working a compromise there. But with the lack of citizen input on this end of it, only about nine blocks down the street, boy, I'm really leery as to whether or not you've had enough citizen input.
Well, you know, that's always a, I suppose that could be a question that we wouldn't know until the end of time. But what we've, what we've done here is, I think there's some mistruths that maybe are running around a little bit. First of all, the buildings aren't 40 to 50 feet tall, they're 36 at most. That's a typical three-story building is around 36 feet. These aren't unattractive buildings. While they're 30plexes, we've seen these around the city. They're beautiful. They're very expensive. It's a beautiful development. I think what, I think what we're finding is that really this property's sat there and sat there and sat there for years and years and years, and no one's bought it, no one's had any interest in it. There was a failed attempt at to commercially zone it. It's, it's just a beautiful project. It, while the neighbors may not want to have 36-foot structures from their, from their living room picture, we're in Omaha, it's a growing city. This is, you know, we can't control what we look at from our, from our buildings, from our homes.
Mr. Irish, I heard two things from the neighbors. One being, we don't, we don't want it, well, actually, I heard three things. We don't want it at all, we'd be willing to compromise if you made it two stories. And then I also heard that this area probably is more suited, the convenience definition, for 100. I know that you're not too favorable for the "we don't want them at all," but what about the other two options of making them two stories instead of three stories?
Well, there's some financial feasibility, and when we look at, this is what we consider a low-density R6. If we look at a high-density, what we'd be looking at to compare this to would be One Pacific Place, for example. That's in the neighborhood of 35 units per acre or so. So we're, we're around 20-ish units per acre, and in the world of apartment, apartments, that's low-density. I don't know that coming down a story really satisfies anyone's issues here. I think that we picked the site because it was within the plan of 250 units. We brought it down from the beginning, down to 205s. We got rid of 45 units or more. There's six buildings and a small seventh building. We have a lot of green area. It just, it just fits, and financially, I don't think that, that it works going to a small number. It just doesn't work, because of what the, we have to pay for grounds in West Omaha now.
Does it work for you financially going to two floors?
No, I think we lose, we'd lose six apartments per floor, so you'd lose 25.
And you couldn't make, you couldn't make that up by just having another additional building?
If we would get approved in the, if, say, we had 100, we have 205 units, and if, and if we could get approved at some number lower than 205 units, say, for example, 185 units, we could live with something like that, but we'd want, we'd want to know if we could get that approved.
I see. I see, okay.
But to go down to the 100 units is just, it just doesn't feasible. You just don't put 100 units on, on 10 acres. It just isn't what the city wants. The city likes the density. They would, this is what the master plan, and I was involved with the master plan in the early days, this is what the master plan wanted.
But you might be open, I say might, you might be open to 185.
If we could get an approval, so we could be moving.
All right. The elevators and the, and the integrated garages were a nice touch. I thought that was, was a nice touch.
I have a bad knee, and I, I have to think about that.
Well, when you get our age, all things go bad quickly.
Thank you. Thanks for being kind.
Okay. At this time, we'll probably call you back up, so I know you're close by, but I'd like to talk to someone from City Planning, and I don't know whether that'll be Mr. Thiel or, or a representative.
James Dale, City Finance Director. Dave Fanslaw is familiar with the case since coming up.
Good afternoon. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning.
Dave, what is your response to Mr. Slusky's interpretation of the convenience use mixed-area definition?
Well, I believe Mr. Slusky read directly from the master plan as far as the way it's described, but if you read further into the master plan, the convenience-sized mixed-use center allows up to 250 units at that intersection adjacent to or within the mixed-use development itself. So the 100, the 100-unit limitation is if it's detached, if it's further away, if it's more than a quarter mile away, or if it's not incorporated into the office and commercial part of mixed-use centers, if it's far enough removed, then you're limited to 100 units. But if you're within or adjacent to a mixed-use area, in this situation, you can have up to 250 at that intersection.
Is it possible that our master plan is vague and we need to go through and do some rewording and some cleaning up? Because you can get four people reading the same document and come away with four different interpretations, well, you can come away with eight interpretations from four people.
I, I think that's true with any city document. I don't think, I think there, and that being, that being said, I think there are a lot of people who interpret the documents that staff is required and given the responsibility to interpret. I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any unclear distinction. The master plan says that it's 250 units with a convenience-sized mixed-use center, so.
Forgive the reference, but in my other job, the other hat I wear, things are clearly spelled out. At City Hall, things are fuzzy. And, and it, I'm not trying to be funny, but far beyond this development, we need to do a better job of clarity here. We really do. It's, it's a day and night difference between this job and the other.
If you're asking my opinion, I think it's very clear what the master plan allows at this intersection.
That's what scares me. Okay? But that's not pointed at you specifically, okay? Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Could I have, let's see here, let's have Ms. Ramsey and- Could I have, um, let's see here, let's have Ms. Ramsey and Mr. Kuhn come up. Please identify yourself.
Chris Kuhn, one ninety-three thirty Pacific Street.
Susan Ramsey, twenty-two thirty South one hundred and eighty-third Circle.
Uh, I may not be the only one with, with the light on, and so I'll start some questioning, and then I may have to circle back around again, but as, as you can see, um, there might be room for a negotiation on density if they can get approval, but I also know that your lawyer says it should be a hundred units, and so at some point in time, and maybe not this exact moment, but before we vote on this, and, and I asked this question before when we met this morning, but we need to get a sign from you, a signal from you as to whether you want to lay it over and try to impact this thing, or whether you think it's unfair, you wanna vote it down, and you'll live with an up or down vote. Is there, is there anything that impressed you in terms of, uh, a willingness to go to a hundred and eighty-five, or the fact that the out, outside of the building did look impressive, or the fact that their, uh, integrated garages or elevators, was that enough for you to wanna go back and, and, and work with the developer, or is it not enough, and you wanna stick with the one hundred figure that your lawyer said, and, and vote this thing down, and, or do you wanna think about it some more?
No, I don't need to think about it, I think the hundred, hundred units that Jerry, uh, suggested is fair, um, we didn't get any of these details at the, uh, the meeting that we met with Mr. Irish, for him to show us.
Were you one of the five?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, we found out about this, the meeting was scheduled for the twenty-sixth of February, the planning board meeting was May, was March 5th. The, uh, I forgot my other thought. Oh, the photographs, um, how can we be guaranteed that that's what they're gonna look like? I mean, we, we have, we have no guarantee, he just showed us the photographs, he didn't have those with him before, and so I think this is kinda being built on the fly.
So it's a trust issue with you?
Well, yes, it is.
A trust issue, okay? Would you like to comment, Susan?
Um, you know, I, I think, uh, again, I'm speaking on behalf of residents who don't always all have the same opinion, um, but I think if it were, we were talking less density and two stories instead of three, I think it'd definitely be more palatable to the people in that area, would fit in to what's already going on there. But I have to echo the same concerns that Bruce has, is a, um, and trust, and it's not a personal issue, but, um, you know, they talk about, oh, here's an easement, we're gonna have another accent, access point, we'll win, there's only one way in and out, I mean, is it gonna be twenty, thirty years before there's another way in or out? Same thing with, you know, where are the studies, where are the recommendations on the issues that we're concerned about with drainage and traffic, you know, we haven't seen anything, how do we know that what they're gonna do is gonna, you know, take care of it, so, um...
Okay, I'll yield the floor right now, but I'll bring you back up a little bit later.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Ms. Milton.
Well, and, uh, Mr. Irish, could you come up?
Kevin Irish, fifty-four sixteen South one sixty-nine, I have to do that every time, don't I?
Yes, unfortunately, thank you. I'm just curious, I, I saw some pictures of the apartments, and I, I've had some other apartments just in the last few months, and, you know, that we've seen pictures of, and I know that a lot of the developers, what they're very proud of is they're putting, even in, there's apartments that are gonna be built outside Candlewood, kinda behind Costco in, in my district, that, a lot of the neighbors were upset about, and they were upset about an access road, but we had a lot of meetings, and in fact, we had over a hundred people show up from one neighborhood at that meeting, and, you know, it was about two and a half hours long, but we were able to get some concessions out of the city, um, the developer was able to explain, you know, what he was doing, and also show us how the design of the apartments was going to fit with the neighborhood, so that although apartments are going in, they were very nice-looking, there's gonna be stone on the bottom half, and some real nice-colored bricks on the top, and even today, I looked at some apartments, and I remember, um, one of the things that the developer, um, said that made the apartments nice was that they weren't gonna have these great big balconies where things can hang off them, and I noticed even in your picture, if we have a bunch of these apartments with great big balconies that are three stories high, and then we have young children, and they have all their little tykes, and I have three kids myself, so, uh, believe me, my, the back of my deck looked that way, but I didn't, I didn't really bother other people with having to look at it, 'cause I have a backyard, but, I mean, that would be my concern, is that these apartments, although they may look nice right when they're built, once you fill them up, they're gonna have, you know, towels hanging off, and it's really gonna change the look of that neighborhood, and I can tell you, there's another neighborhood in my district, the Cherry Hills neighborhood, very nice neighborhood, nice homes, the people that live there are very proud of their neighborhood and, and take care of their homes, but there's Cherry Hills apartments that were very nice when they were built, but over the last ten to fifteen years since they were built, they've really gotten rundown, and screens are, you know, hanging off, and, and trash has built up, so at one time, those apartments were nice, but I think they have gone through various owners, and now the current owners live in California and really don't care, and so the poor property owners in Cherry Hills, it's actually affecting their property values, aesthetically, it does not look good anymore, and so I really understand the concerns of the neighbors, that these apartments, although may look good on paper, there's no guarantee that that's what they're gonna look like ten years from now, when one of them is trying to sell their home.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to address that, I think that, um, good management in any business is inherent, we have to have good management, but I think what you do is, in the, you, you try to correct us at the, at the grassroots level, where you put things like that in the leases, you have enforcement, how to do that, you know, for example, we've been seeing some smoking issues out on Maple Street, where an apartment complex has burned down, or had a fire two or three times, that goes to the implement new issues or, uh, new policies, and they, and they enforce them, I think the same thing goes with this, in, in our, in this world in west Omaha, we have to make these look attractive to compete with what else is around us, otherwise, we're not gonna lease, we have to make these look nice, keep them up, keep them well landscaped, but then we don't want the towels on there any, any more than you do, we don't want the, the little things, but that's where the good management and, and everything in my business world has been good management, I ran the largest real estate company in the state for years and years and years, we have great management people in place, we will enforce those issues, and, uh, then that's, it just doesn't stop with the towels on the deck, it just, it's, it goes with unsightly cars in the parking lot, it goes with maybe the trash not being picked up, it go, it just, it lends itself to anything, to anything, but since these apartments are market-driven, we need to have best practices, best business practices to keep, to keep us, to keep our occupancy up there where we need to be, and we're hands-on for that.
Well, and I, I think one of the concerns is having a, a three-story apartment building, the, the Grove Apartments, um, now I, now I've lost it, Grove, Grove Ridge, uh, and one of the things that that developer made sure he did was make the apartment buildings look like homes in the area, so, they're, the, each individual building was smaller in size and was two-story, therefore, this apartment complex didn't jump out at somebody driving down the street, or somebody that's gonna be going into the Grove to buy a home, I don't think it took away from the neighborhood aesthetically. I, you know, my, my fear, I think I agree with the neighbors, that building these three-story apartments, which is different from everywhere in the neighborhood, I mean, you go all the way down to the retail space, all the way down to, you know, Mama's Pizza in that area, those are all two-story, everything is two-story over in that area, and I think all of a sudden putting these three-story buildings up, even if it falls into the mixed use, I even say the mixed use on the other side is probably gonna remain two-story.
Well, and that goes back to Mr. Thompson's comment, if, if we could come to, uh, an agreement to have the, the lesser apartments in the one eighty-five range, not the one hundred range, it just doesn't work for that, this, it just doesn't work, if we could come where we can get an approval for a lesser number of apartments, I'd be, I'd be, I wouldn't be opposed to that. You know, we, talk about a trust issue, we have our primary business, and Mr. Thompson alluded to his primary business a little bit, we have a dog resort, a pet resort in west Omaha, that's, it's like the Taj Mahal for dogs, so if we go to that level for people's pets, what can you imagine we do with these apartment complexes? We want to have the stone, we want to have these, the integral garages, we don't wanna just slap up some apartments with nothing but outside garages they pull their cars into, building these, like, units in today's world approach about ninety thousand dollars per unit, these are very expensive apartments, they're very, very nice, and they have all the amenities that any of us in this room would live in, and so, um, but it, if, even if they are two-story, if they're one-story, it still, it still bodes us well to have good management practices, 'cause you can have them at one story, and they could look shabby with what, you know, if we don't keep our hands on it, but we, we're very hands-on management, we're very intense in every endeavor that we encounter, so I, I appreciate your comments, but we're gonna be, we'll be good landlords.
Well, and it, it's not just being good landlords, I mean, part of it, it would be being good neighbors, and, and at this point in time, I, with all the other apartment complexes that have come before us over the last year, I can tell you, there have been multiple meetings with, between the neighbors and the developers, and the developers have been willing to make some concessions and try and be good neighbors, and although most of the, most of the apartments, in fact, all of them, I think, have all, have all passed, it's because the developer has gone that extra mile, um, the neighbors still weren't always happy, but I think they were happier than had the developer, you know, just briefly had a meeting, and from what I've heard, the meeting was, I'm telling you what I'm doing, not, here's what I'm doing, do you have some thoughts, is there some maybe back and forth? And, so at this point in time, I, I'm gonna have to say that I'm inclined to vote no, because I, I don't think all the due diligence was done on this project to not only ensure myself, but ensure the people that are around your development that it is gonna be top-notch and high-quality, and it's gonna fit, because part of what the master plan calls for is high-quality, and I, I don't know that, I've been convinced, or I've had, I've had enough time to even see that that's what it's gonna be, you know, in my other job, I think I might be inclined to agree with Mr. Slusky as a lawyer, that what is the definition in the master plan, and I would think in this area where we have the kinda homes that we have right now, that it should be about a hundred units, I, that's how I would interpret this at this time, now, does that mean there isn't room for some movement there, and that maybe there, we could go somewhere in-between if it was a real high-quality job, and we could add some more apartments than what we have, but, you know, just down the street, it was zoned R6, but the developer himself agreed to follow R5, and so just because you can do R6 doesn't necessarily mean that you should, um, and so I, I do think that there, there should be a little more, we should take a little more time, or, um, I guess I would suggest that you take a little more time, because I, I just don't see that this particular project, I'm not convinced, really does fit with the master plan, so although the planning department passed it seven oh, I guess I would, I would disagree with them at this point.
Well, no, and I appreciate your comments, I just think that, uh, when we're on the development committee out in the, out in the field, and we look at opportunities, we don't have a lot of things to gauge what, you know, we don't have a playbook, for, for example, so the master plan is probably the closest thing we have to a playbook, so we felt that when the corner, uh, had a beacon on it for two fifty, that coming down to two hundred and five does fit more in within the, of what we could do, and, and the berming and the trees and the landscaping, the different things that we would do, we felt that we were, uh, consistent with what the neighborhood would be and, and what the master plan shows.
Okay, well, and, and, you know, and I appreciate that, I, I don't want you to think that we're, I'm telling you that you've done anything wrong by any means, I just think that there may be a better way, there may be a better way to accomplish this.
It sounds like we might be a little bit far off, though, because if they're standing strong on the one hundred and we're standing, and we make a comment that we'd be willing to, to maybe do the one eighty-five, which is, which probably would be more of the two-story, that, um, I think that's a pretty good compromise on our part, you know, from shitting for my hip here.
Okay, well, and I appreciate that, I also think that if you were willing to come down a little, um, that maybe the council would, and I don't know where, where anybody else sits on this, but I would be more willing to cast my vote for this project if it was down to a two-story, and there were a little more, there were a few more guarantees that this was gonna be a high-quality project.
How would we, how would you see me fulfilling the guarantee as far as high-quality?
I mean, showing us designs of what you intended, of what you intend to build, because the ones that you showed, showed us today were kind of tall three-story buildings with big balconies, that I, I wanna, I wanna know what those apartments, or vision what those apartments are gonna look like in ten years, not just what they're gonna look like right now.
And this, this would show, um, the first floor there shows the integral garage, then it shows the part, the, uh, the balconies, and I don't think those are large.
Well, and you showed us another picture where they weren't the covered balconies, they were open. And see, it's some of those that, you know, when you drive around town and you see some of those buildings right off the street, they, ten years from now, they tend to not look quite as nice as they do in the picture, so, perhaps if, if you had more time to discuss some of these things with the neighbors, um, we wouldn't just be forcing a project on them, and again, right now, we, we're seeing tall three-story buildings, and if we could reduce the number of units, we may reduce some of the traffic and, and reduce some of those safety concerns, and those aren't all your problem, I mean, it sounds to me like there may be a problem at a hundred and ninety-second with the number of crashes we have, um, and I'm not sure that your figures are showing the right number of crashes if we, I've heard of three already today, which would've been in the last couple months, and some of them, they're only three in a year, so...
And I don't know how those get reported, those, yeah, those quite simply came from the, from the city.
Okay.
Chris Rawling, I believe, so, uh, but we're, we're looking, 'cause, you know, times of the essence, we're looking for, we'd like to have a vote, we're willing to, if it takes a two-story building, and we can have the maximum density on the site with two-story buildings, we'd do that, um, but we'd like to have the maximum density we could with a two-story structure, and if that's a hundred and eighty-five, that's fine, if it's one seventy-two, or, you know, I don't know, because I haven't done the, the math and see what we can do for, for parking spots and that type of thing, but if we could say we could have the maximum density with a two-story structure, we'd do that.
Okay. Thank you, I have nothing further, Mr. President.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a question along those lines, too, and then, and then, just a few comments at this juncture as well, um, so today appears to be density and traffic day at the city council, we had a number of briefings today on a number of different items, all related to these kinda issues, and I would point out, there's one in my district we talked today, talked about today, that goes from R2 to R8, uh, four hundred and thirty units on seven acres, and this one's similar in that respect, although fewer, fewer units, goes from AG to R6 with two hundred and fifty units as, or two hundred and five units as proposed so far today, but I think we are getting, we are getting somewhere, it appears to me, with the conversation we just had, um, between the developer and the neighborhood, and, and what those joint interests might be, and, and I respect, um, some of the comments from Ms. Ramsey and, and Ms. Cantu, and Mr. Kuhn, in the respect that I don't think they're saying development's never gonna happen there, because clearly it is, uh, on that, on that kind of a corner, but what you are saying is, you have some issues with the density and, and traffic and some of the things that, of a more practical nature, that maybe some more work could be done on to, to improve that, um, that perspective, and I think the developer's saying he's willing to do that a little bit in, in his last comments, so, I think that's starting to go in a positive direction, from my perspective, but might need some more time to figure out what that sweet spot is, or if there is a sweet spot, um, and, and give the developer some more time to figure out, um, what is financially doable in that respect if we are reducing that density. So to me, that appears to, appears to be where this could go today, if, if the council's so willing to do that. A question, though, for Public Works, um, that I don't think was asked yet, in terms of the traffic, there's some disagreements about what the impacts might be, was there ever, or maybe it's planning, I should ask this question of, was there ever an indication or a request that this development pursue a traffic study, or did you determine that was not needed at this, at this juncture? Mr. Murthy is here, I see. Or Mr. Cody, I'm sorry, Murthy Cody.
Uh, good afternoon, Murthy Cote, City Traffic Engineer, Public Works, uh, no, we did not require a traffic study for this development, uh, staff routinely reviews any and all developments proposed as part of the standard plating process, and we assess the infrastructure, existing infrastructure, whether it be streets, drainage, and we, particularly for this kind of a development, where it is proposing two hundred units, two hundred and five units, uh, we reviewed the existing traffic numbers, we've looked at the capacity, and, uh, we were confident that the existing infrastructure of the streets would be able to comfortably handle the traffic being generated by this development.
So that's been the Public Works interpretation, um, might there be... Might there be some value in having a site done in any respect to the neighbors' concerns and how that might be a factor in how this could come together?
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly shed some more light on some of the analysis we have done. The two hundred units that we're talking about here generates about hundred, hundred and twenty cars in the peak hour. So out of which, you know, usually in the morning, it's eighty percent outbound and twenty percent inbound trips. So there's going to be eighty vehicles in the peak hour, AM peak hour, that will be leaving the site. So if there's any queue that occurs because of the congestion, it'll be all on their side. It won't be on the public street system. Similarly, in the evening, peak hour, we're talking about another hundred, hundred and twenty cars, but it'll be a sixty-forty split, meaning sixty percent of these hundred or hundred and twenty vehicles would be inbound and the rest would be outbound. So we're again talking about roughly sixty or so vehicles trying to get into the site from different directions, whether it be through southbound on one hundred and ninety-second, making a right turn into the side or northbound coming or leaving Pacific Street intersection and trying to make a northbound left turn. I would like to acknowledge or remind the, the council that currently one hundred and ninety-second street is a three-lane section, which means there is a center left-turn lane. And that, that lane provides refuge area for any cars that need to turn right into the development. So from that standpoint, that improves the safety for everybody that's trying to get in to the site.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Irish.
Kevin Irish, fifty-four sixteen, South One Sixty-Ninth.
Thank you. So you indicated a willingness in your remarks just recently to consider the density aspect of this and what, and what might be, you might, what you might be willing to do from a financial perspective if some reduction was desired. I know you're just kind of shooting from the hip at this point when you say one eighty-five or one seventy-two and, and could that allow you to go back to two-stories? But my question to you is, in figuring that out and going back and crunching those numbers, how much time would be a reasonable amount of time for you to, to do that and maybe re-engage the neighbors?
You know, I could, I would say two weeks. You know, I, I think we can, we move fairly quickly. We have everybody, we have the potential builders that are, are ready to go. They're working some numbers for us now. I did crunch some numbers before I came down here today, just in case, in case we needed to, to reduce a building or get rid of a building or, so I, I, you know, I didn't come down here just totally unprepared. But if we could do a maximum density with two-story buildings, that would be acceptable to me. Now, I, I don't know how the, the neighbors would feel about that, but I think that's a wonderful gesture on our part because I would go with two-stories as long as I could have the maximum density. And the maximum density, you know, that has all the requirements of all the parking, surface parking, all the other things that are required. We can't just plow them on there. But I would do two-story buildings if we could have the maximum density.
Okay, thank you. I see we have some other lights. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure, I do like the, the negotiating that is going on. That's what this is all about. Too bad this wasn't done earlier. Maximum density to me means two hundred and fifty. Is that what you're saying? Um, please.
We couldn't do two hundred and fifty because we wouldn't have, if we went to the two, if we went to the two-story, thank you, Mr. President, if we went to the two-story buildings, that would goof up our parking. So we couldn't have two hundred and fifty units.
Okay.
We'd have to, we would have to have less to, because there's a balancing act between surface parking and.
Okay, I was just trying to make sure that dropping the buildings and then more buildings. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
And Doug could address that more because he's a.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Drawer.
Thank you. Uh, I, I want to just take another, thank you, I'm fine. Another juncture here is, could I have somebody from Planning or Road, Public Works? Could I have them speak to me?
James Hill, City Planning.
Okay, what I'm a little bit concerned, I think you probably realized a couple of weeks ago when I said God didn't make this master plan, I'm really finding out he didn't. The issue that I have is I've heard, and I don't know if this is just talk, that a former planning board member said that this master plan was developed for things such as what we're dealing with today not to happen. Was that just a conversation that happened to be going on between people? I mean, is that, is there any truth to that fact?
Uh, James Hill, City Planning. I, I guess when you look at the city's master plan and you look at the future land use plan, this is quite clearly a ten-acre mixed-use site and it does provide for the two hundred and fifty units proposed. I think it's very clear is what the master plan called for in this area.
Okay. But then I hear somebody come up and says, "Well, they see a fallacy in that reasoning." I'm just like, say, I, when was the last time, you said the land use? When was the last time that was reviewed?
James Hill, City Planning Director. Well, we review it every year. Dave, when is the last time we specifically looked at that area? Do you remember?
Mr. Pauls, answer your question. We continually look at the, the future land use plan. It's been amended, I think it was adopted in nineteen ninety-two. It's been amended a, a number of times since its adoption.
The land use section of the plan is what you're telling me has been amended a number of times?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Here's another question I have. The only reason I, and I shouldn't say the only reason, but one reason I had a negative feeling about this project, not because of the, how the developer's developing it. It seems like we are developing areas out in western part of the city and the roads aren't there. You must keep in mind, I lived on one hundred and sixty-eighth. I've lived there for around forty years. And one hundred and sixty-eighth is a mess. When do we anticipate one hundred and ninety-second being changed? When, when is that in the picture?
Bob Stube, Public Works. We go through CIP planning process, our capital improvement program, every year and we put together a six-year program. Currently, the one that exists today is twenty fourteen through twenty nineteen. There are no plans in the current CIP. We're in the process of developing the CIP for twenty fifteen through twenty twenty and there are no plans within the, that proposed CIP to make any improvements to Pacific Street back to the east or one hundred and ninety-second street back to the south. But keep in mind that this particular development is improving Pacific Street to the west to kind of continue that three-lane section. And then as, as Murthy Cote indicated, one hundred and ninety-second street to the north is already a three-lane section, which does provide opportunities for people that are making left-turn movements into this development to have an ability to do that without impeding them through traffic.
And I do appreciate that. That's the one reason why when the, anytime we're going to build on a street, maybe Dodge, our center's a little different because they're four-lane. But when we're starting to look at streets that are not there yet, it makes, I'm a little bit concerned. Well, since I have you, one hundred and sixty-eighth is going to be, part of it's going to be completed this year or next year? Am I correct there?
Bob Stube. Bob Stube, Public Works. One hundred and sixty-eighth street is in our CIP that goes from essentially Popleton, which is just south of Pacific Street, all the way down to a little bit north of Q Street. It's not proposed to be under construction this year, but it is in the current CIP.
Oh, I thought MAP, we, okay. Well, that's another, another story. But you're telling me one hundred and ninety-second is way in the future?
Yeah, I, Bob, again, Bob Stube, Public Works. I can't tell you as far as when. There are a number of sections that lead up to that location that are still not improved. I mean, Pacific Street west of one hundred and sixty-eighth street is still a two-lane section. And then you also have one hundred and eightieth street, north and south, that's a two-lane section. So there's a lot of improvements that need to be made prior to that. But anytime that we go through a CIP process, we look at, you know, congestion, we look at accidents, we look at the condition of the streets when we make a determination with regard to what sections of roads get improved.
Okay, thank, I appreciate that. And I want to get back to what we were talking about a couple of minutes ago. I think if we can do some negotiating between both groups, I think we are probably on our way. I would be more amenable to voting for it if something like that would happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have Mr. Slusky come up.
Jerry Slusky, eighty-seven, twelve, West Dodge.
Thank you, Jerry. This morning, I met with the neighbors, some of the neighbors, and I had six reasons to vote this down. And of those six reasons, one has been fully addressed and then two have been halfway addressed. The one with height, as we can see, there might be some movement with that, height slash density. So there's some promise there. I had a problem with the fact that there wasn't really, for such an important multimillion-dollar project, the, the lack of neighborhood input. Everybody in that, in that, that's developing in that area knows that you must have neighborhood input. It's just, it's just part of the landscape. And that, that bothered me. But, you know, maybe, maybe there were some issues with how people were contacted, I'm not sure. I wasn't contacted and it's hard for me to help you when you make it harder for me to help you. But then there was, you know, somewhat of an explanation on that. I'm, I'm not happy, like my colleague on the right, with the fact that the current infrastructure for one hundred and ninety-first street, it's, it's not up to par for what's there now. That bothers me. I'm also believing that it is apartment overload. I think somebody said that that area is a fabulous area of town and the fabulous area of town could use a momentary period of respite. A little bit of, go somewhere else for a while and then come back later. But nonetheless, it probably was, you know, a compliment. But still, there are many, many areas that could, are dying to have apartments and they would be welcomed. And the infrastructure is there and the streets are wider and et cetera, et cetera. That's a, that's a problem for me. And then much, much like you, I, I have the same interpretation of the master plan. I think when I read about convenience use mixed areas, that I get the same definition you do. And it seems like that that's orderly, well-thought-out planning. Now, having said that, I'm willing to vote no on this. But will you take maybe just a quick minute and huddle with your folks and ask them, "Do we vote it up or down today? Or do you want a layover to talk to the developer?" Because right now, I'm not sure which way to go. I'm ready, I'm ready to, to, to vote it down. But I want to make sure that they have an opportunity to look at all their options because we could, they could lose the vote today or they could win. It could go either way.
Sure.
Would you take a moment and do that, please?
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, Councilman Thompson, it's okay if we move on while they confer and come back? Okay. Mr. Jarrett.
Yes, maybe while they're doing that, I could, I had intended just to make a motion to layover, but I like what you're doing there and let them huddle for a second. One of the reasons that I've spoke before about the master plan and density and favoring developments like this is that we often hear at budget time, which is just down the road, the tax burden that people share in this town and their, their belief that they're paying too much for city services. It's, it's sort of ironic that there's a concern about the density aspects of this project and I understand those of the neighbors, but it's the very density that they're opposing, which provides the more diverse property tax base that then allows the city to have additional funds in the coffers to provide the infrastructure that they so desperately say they need in terms of widening streets, improving services, providing maybe a fifth police precinct in the western part of the city and all those sorts of things. So you can't achieve that kind of diverse and, and shared tax burden to provide that level of service that's now being called for by these residents on a simple residential R two, three or four development basis. So I think when you have the master plan that has these sorts of mixed-use developments that call for this kinds of density, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but that's why I continue to, to make those statements, is that we absolutely need them. On this particular aspect, the developer has said that he's comfortable with the one eighty-five range of two-stories and it seems to me to be crying out for that kind of compromise here because he can still achieve a, a significant level of density that's consistent with the master plan in an area which the neighbors have said that, that was one of their concerns. I would be remiss, however, if I didn't say what are some of the differences between what we've been seeing on this project and what we see in the downtown and midtown apartment developments, is that typically there's a lot more work on the front end by the developers in terms of providing information, providing the answers to the questions that neighbors have, meeting with the neighbors even before they put it on the planning board agenda, meeting with them again, having the elevations, even though there's an extra expense to that, they go that extra mile, they provide those. And that's, provide the description of the materials to be used, they have pictures of that. All the things that we see over and over again in downtown and midtown just isn't here. So I'd, I'd appreciate it if, in the future, that if you're coming back, that you take that extra effort even though there is expense to that, to incur that. The argument that they make about the infrastructure in terms of one hundred and ninety-second street, if, if Mr. Cote thought for a minute that there was a traffic study warranted, I, I know with all these other projects that we have going on, particularly one that we had another briefing on today, there's been three traffic engineers that have looked at that particular development in the seventieth and Cass area. You know, there was one by Lamprey and Earsen, there was another review by HDR, there was another one re-reviewed by the neighbors, apparently didn't come out the way they wanted at ENA. So now they've backed off and they won't be participating. But there's the six-lane roads to the south and to the west and there's four-lane road to the north and there's a three-lane road to the east. So I get what you're saying in terms of, hey, it seems like in many areas, it's a lot easier and more palatable to approve these things from a policymaker's standpoint. But I just urge everyone to, to think about that property tax base in terms of providing the level of services in West Omaha as the city builds out that we'll need to provide. And I think the, the compromise here that the developer's willing to, to make is a, is a balance to do that, to move in that direction. And that's all I wanted to say, other than hoping that we do have a motion to layover to allow that to happen.
Well, one of the things that I said in pre-council is that I, I trust my colleagues and I, I know that you guys think things through well. And so collective wisdom is always better than just my own wisdom. The fact that I, neither Councilman Pauls or I actually represent these people, but chances are it'll be annexed someday and we will be if we, if we're still here or, you know, our successors. So I, I just want to make sure that the neighbors, and neighbors need to go ahead and wrap it up soon. But I need to give them an option of knowing that it could pass today or could not. And I need to represent them by giving them a chance to at least give us feedback on whether we, we want to lay it over or whether we want to take a vote. And I see Mr. Kuhn, would you go ahead and identify yourself again, sir?
Bruce Kuhn, one ninety-three, thirty, Pacific Street. I guess we'd like a compromise, your compromise. We'd, we'd like to ask you to vote it down today, have them come back with a plan with our input so that we're very sure of exactly what they're going to do and we can, we can proceed from there. And.
And that's the consensus of the group?
That's the consensus of the, the group.
I, I'd like to make that my motion, Mr. Clerk. And I hope I can get a second. So it'd be a motion to deny with.
The motion?
Motion to deny and the citizens are saying that they're willing to still work. that they're willing to still work with the same developer, but they want to start over. Hope I can get a second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Fanslaw, you wanted to say something a few minutes ago, I noticed?
Yeah, thanks. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. There's been a lot of talk of compromise and the height of the buildings, and the way the buildings look, and the number of units. Just, this is a preliminary plat, so none of that would be guaranteed through this process. When we first met with the developer and his representative the very first pre-application meeting we had with the group, we suggested that they do a PUD, which locks down all of the things that have been discussed as part of a compromise. So I don't, obviously don't know where you guys are going to vote today, but if it comes back or gets laid over, the only way to guarantee the way the buildings look, the height of those buildings, the green space, the parking, the density would be to apply for, along with the rezoning, a PUD overlay. So I'm just letting you guys know that.
Do I start the floor, sir, or do I have to put my hat on again? Susan, if you could come back up? Identify yourself again.
Susan Ramsey.
Ms. Ramsey, are you against a PUD?
Um, well, I am not real familiar with how it works, just a general understanding that it kind of locks them in. If they show a picture and say, we're going to do something like this, then it can't be something different, it has to be no. We're going to do exactly this.
Whatever we approve, that's it. The PUD locks it in, yes.
Right.
But my understanding is that you want to vote this down and start the process over from beginning.
Not that we would necessarily have to start completely from scratch, but just reach some kind of compromise, maybe take what he has and work down from there.
Okay, thank you very much. The motion...
Mr. Fanslaw, a clarification on your comment, too. So are you suggesting if a PUD is desirable, they should be denied, and they should reapply in a different fashion?
Well, I think it could be laid over, and then we could work on a PUD plan that could then catch up to the plat.
I see, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Pauls. For the lights, I might ask Mr. Irish or Mr. Halverson their opinion of that, what we just heard, and the motion. So it's, the motion on the floor is to...
Not adopt the resolution.
To not adopt, which means you start over, and I guess reapply, correct, Mr. Fanslaw?
They would have to apply for the PUD, yes.
So reapply, and there's a fee with that, correct?
Correct.
What is that fee?
I don't know off the top of my head, couple, $300, $400, maybe.
Okay, so there's that to consider. But from a practical perspective, your thoughts on continuing to work with this notion, either through denying and starting over or through a layover preference, or are both doable from your perspective?
Kevin Irish, 5416 South 169. Well, I prefer layover. We can get to the two-story structures and have less density. I don't know that I want to start over. We're not excited about a PUD. We, I have no problem showing the neighbors, having the architect come up from Lincoln, showing them our designs, other, other projects that he's done, doing the two-story buildings, having a lesser density. But I think that's, that would be fair for a developer who, and I know we've beat this horse, but for a developer who's brought a project to the table that would have allowed 250 units, down to 205 units, down to 185 units, and going from a three-story to a two-story structure, I think it seems that I might be the one that's doing all the giving or taking here. And so what I would like to see is a vote up or down on 185 two-story units.
Which can either happen through a layover with further work or from a denial and a reworking of the plan, right? Okay, thank you. There is a motion and a second. Any further lights, for comments? Roll call.
This is the motion not to adopt the resolution. Pauls? Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
No.
Gary?
No.
Jerem?
Melton?
Mr. President?
I think I'd prefer the layover situation, which I think perhaps could happen next, so I think I'll say no.
Motion to layover in two weeks.
And do we think two weeks is a reasonable amount of time from the neighborhood perspective? It seems, that seems kind of tight to me, but... Ms. Ramsey, if you want to make a comment?
I'm just thinking this weekend, it's a holiday weekend for a lot of people, they're going to be gone, so it might be pushing it to try to come back from a vacation and then handle this. I know, I'm leaving town in the morning at 6 o'clock, I won't be back till the following week.
Okay.
So maybe three weeks?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gray, you made the motion, is there, what's your thought on that?
Yeah, Mr. President, let me, let me just say, first of all, I kind of agree with the developer that you're doing all the negotiating. The negotiating is kind of going one way here, but, and I hope that we can address or get this done with a two-week layover. If we need to do it longer, can I have, you can come back up for a minute again, please, and let me ask you, what is, what, what kind of a timeframe are you working with? Is three weeks, would three weeks cause too much of a delay? Would a month cause much of a delay? Tell me what, tell me what...
Two weeks, the reason, you know, in two weeks, we have, we have other people that this revolves around. And so a two-week delay, I think we would be able to get together next week. I know, I know Sunday's Easter, but we could be together midweek. We could have some plans drawn over the weekend, meet midweek, get some feedback, maybe have another meeting past that to show progress. And then, so I think two weeks is more than enough time. I think people have a tendency, it's kind of like our closets, we have a tendency to fill it up. If we have three weeks, four weeks, we don't do anything for a while. I think it's nice to keep things crisp, and while, you know...
Mr. President, I think, well, let me, thank you, first of all. Mr. President, I think if we lay it over two weeks, if they're close to something and they need an extra week, I think we can give them that at the appropriate time. And, you know, but I think we, I think we wait till we get to that point, rather than, you know, spread this thing out any longer. So I'm going to stay with the two weeks, that's my motion.
And can you, can you public carry on as well, right?
Yeah, continue.
Thank you. And so is that second still standing on that? There's a motion and a second, and I would, I would just add to that, if that, if it does come back in two weeks, I think the preference of the council is probably not to have to do the negotiating at a meeting like this, but to have the both of you work that out when it does come back. And I don't think we have a lot of interest in spending another two hours here doing that for you, but in hopes you can do that when you come back. And if not, we would probably just lay it over additionally, right, at that point without further comment.
I could have something I want to add to the motion.
Yeah, I'm going to amend the motion to include that there at least be one meeting with the Neighborhood Association between now and that, neighborhoods, with the neighbors between now and that time. That'll be included in the motion.
Okay, that's the motion and the second, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, in light of the fact that, I know the developer's going through some hoops here, but partially, he calls, he brought it on himself, so I don't want to beat up the neighbors. And in light of the fact that there is a holiday coming up, I'd like to put a substitute motion out there for three weeks and to meet with the neighbors twice. Hope I get a second on the substitute motion.
So, Mr. Clerk, that would be the vote on the substitute motion, correct? Mr. Gernat?
Why we're not doing this right up front? We were talking about if it comes back and they need another week, why don't we just go four weeks? For some reason, it just seems to me that in four weeks, the neighbors will have ample time, got a holiday coming up, sit down, have a meeting or two. In two weeks, to have two neighborhood meetings over a holiday? I just don't think, or even three weeks would make that. I think a 30 days or a four-week layover would give adequate time to come back and just say, hey, we're not there, we voted up or down.
Is that a substitute of the substitute?
No, we don't do... We're not going to go that way.
I'm just throwing my, my opinion out. We've been at this now for nearly two hours.
No, we're not, no, we can't do that.
I think you got to withdraw your substitute.
You have to withdraw yours first before you can do that.
Would you withdraw yours in a second?
If you make that substitute, that motion, I will.
I will.
Then I withdraw.
I'll make a substitute motion. We lay over for four weeks with the neighbors and the developer meeting.
Second. One more light, if that's okay, Mr. Jerem? Mr. Clerk? Your wave, okay. Four-week layover, there's a motion and a second, and to meet with the neighborhood. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's laid over four weeks.
Thank you.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, Agenda Items Number 9 and 11 shall be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing. Item number 10 is a resolution of the plat entitled, Midtown Triangle Located Northwest of 30th and 11th Streets hereby approved, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. There's a request from Planning Department to return this to the Planning Department.
Second, roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson? He is out of the chamber, where's Thompson? He left.
Yes.
Say yes.
Yes, this is layover, or this is return to planning. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's return to planning 6-0. Liquor. Item number 12. Stores, Trophy Room Brewery and Grill, 345 Riverfront Drive. A catering liquor license application, O location, and they presently hold a Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on number 12 is today, proponents, Mr. Kelly.
Mr. President, members of council, at long last, Mike Kelly, 7124 Pacific. We're here just for a catering license. With me is Mr. Tom Markle, you know, with the stores, DL. And this is the first of many times we'll be here, there's a lot of plans down there. He just wants to be here if you have any questions. There's going to be a brewery development, so there'll be some serious development there in addition to addition to the premises, and then also the STL issued for the college world series. This is just the first of many, which is the catering license, and we are here for any questions, and I wanted him here to be here if he had any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Do you guys plan a PUD, or, no, I'm just kidding?
I was going to say, I'm going to buy an apartment out here.
Hey, what's it for?
Are there traffic concerns? Is there a motion and a second?
There is.
Roll call.
Pauls? Gernat? Gray?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's 5 to 0. Item number 13, tracks, 1506 South 60th Street. Request permission for an addition of the present Class C liquor license to extend the existing outdoor area to 32 by 24. They have an amendment to reduce that to 23 by 26.
Public hearing on number 13 is today, proponents, please.
Ann Conan, 1506 South 60th?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed?
Move the amendment.
Move the amendment, move the amendment.
One second. Okay. One question, we have a motion and a second to approve the amendment. One question, I think a council member wanted to know was, would there be, would there be a plan for outdoor music at the site?
No, not at this time. Would I need permission for that?
I think that's the right answer.
I would?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. But I would need permission to have music outside. Okay.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the amendment? Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes. Second, roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved as amended, 6 to 0. Item number 14 is Dr. Jack's Drinkery, 3012 North 102nd Street. Request permission for a special edition license for a dance and beer garden on May 25th from 12 noon to 2 a.m. with music ending at 2 a.m.
Public hearing on number 14 is today, proponents, please.
Derek Wallen, 3012 North 102nd.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed, Ms. Melton?
Yes, I have a question. You're requesting permission to have a dance beer garden until 2 a.m. on May 25th. And it's my understanding that you have done this in the past. Is that correct? And I haven't heard that there have been any problems. Was that confirmed? We discussed it at 10:30. There's been no previous problems. My only concern is having the, having loud music until 2 a.m. Although there haven't been problems in the past, you're not that far from the neighborhood, you know, the...
What neighborhood is that?
There's houses kind of right down the street, is it?
No.
Right behind you? I might be a block or so away, but you haven't...
There's no, there's no housing within two blocks of my location. And there are apartments that...
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, I was going to say, I know there's housing just to the north of you back there.
Yeah, there's, there's a block away, we have, to the north of us, we have a, a storage unit place, and then a block after that is some apartment buildings.
Two blocks?
Yes.
I mean, because my, my thought is, I don't know that we've ever approved music past 1 a.m. Is that correct? Not that, not to my recollection since I've been here.
We have in some locations, but in a rare instance, I think.
I think that's right.
We've got it down.
Downtown.
Yeah, would, would you be willing to cut it off at 1 at this point in time? I mean, if there's no complaints, maybe we'll extend it to 2?
Well, I feel that I've done this many times in the past, and as you've noted and stated, that I've never had any problems. The police have never been called. We have five uniformed police officers that will be there. We have multiple security that'll be there. The whole place is fenced off. We have the interstate on one side of us, we have Maple and a gas station on the other side of us. We're in between another building. And the firehouse really is my main concern, is the firehouse. And we have a good standing with them, and have never had any problems with them. And I'm currently requesting 2 a.m. I don't see, you know, maybe the reason that you haven't is because recently, we have moved our drinking up till 2 a.m., And I'm currently requesting 2 a.m. I don't see, you know, maybe the reason that you haven't is because recently we have moved our drinking up till 2 a.m., and it never was an option in the past, but I'm sure you'll see more of this in the future now that we've moved our cutoff date at 2 a.m.
Well, I understand it. It's been, actually, it's been 2 a.m. for quite a few years, well before I came on council. So, and in the last year, we, I have not approved one, or we have not approved one, to my recollection, that's gone until 2 a.m. So I guess I would, I would go ahead and approve it, but I would approve it as amended to 1 a.m.
Wow. Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion.
Well, we have to. I'm gonna ask our attorney if, if we can amend it without his requesting an amendment.
Oh, I understand, because this is the first time, actually, we've had somebody not agree to.
Yes, that's right.
Reduce it.
Tom I'mgar, Deputy City Attorney. No, he's the only one that can amend it. You either vote, you have to vote for it the way it is. If he doesn't want to amend it to 1 a.m., your choice is to approve it or disapprove it.
Okay, thank you. I with, I guess I withdraw my motion.
Can you?
I, I'm gonna say at this point in time, I'm, I'm gonna do a motion to deny it unless you want, unless you're willing to amend it to 1.
That's unfortunate.
Okay.
Second, your motion.
Motion to deny.
There's a motion in a second. Mr. Garnett.
I didn't know that motion was gonna come up that fast, but I was just gonna say that I, I would be more than happy to support this with a 1 a.m. stopping the music. I know you have a great track record. We start one place and then it just seems to be infectious.
We do have a great track record, councilman, and, you know, we have a lot in place with our promotions company that we're utilizing as well as all of the distributors that are involved, and, you know, I would have to go back to them and make sure that that would be something that they would be willing to do, but I believe, you know, I'd be willing to say, yes, we'd go to 1, but I do disagree with your, your assessment, and I'd have to say that my proven track record speaks for itself.
Are you done? Okay. Ms. Milton, did you want to respond?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with one comment. We, we had a bar that we had to deny one of these permits to last year just due to the fact, and it was, it bordered my district and your district, and I can't remember the name of the bar. She, the owner's a wonderful lady, she has an excellent track record, but the, we simply didn't have the police to handle any additional, just in case there was a call. And we denied it to the O that was downtown, too. So just because somebody has an excellent track record doesn't mean that we don't have other reasons why we need to cut, maybe keep something consistent, and we simply didn't have the police, even though she had a great track record. If an emergency would have occurred, the Northwest precinct had said, we can't respond to it. And, and so we had to deny the permit altogether. I guess what we're asking for is that we, you limit it, that you be willing to limit it to 1, because that's what we've asked virtually everybody else to do. I mean, there, there are police issues. You may have off-duty police officers hired, but if there was an incident that broke out at your bar and we have it going till 2 a.m. and we have everybody else going till 2 a.m., it really does affect the city. It affects setting precedents for other, other bars, so we're not doing anything to you specifically. It's just that that's what we've asked everybody else to do, and we're asking you to do that. I think it would be very unfortunate for you if you were denied the entire day, because it looks like you're here from 12 noon to 2 a.m., and I would hate for you to have to cancel your entire day that you have already scheduled. I, I mean, to me, I think that would be a lot more unfortunate than having to shut down the, the music at, at 1 o'clock. So I guess I'll, again, I'll leave that up to you. If you're willing to amend, I'll withdraw my motion to deny. If you're willing to amend that to 1, I just want you to think about what you're asking of the council.
I had stated that I'm willing to amend. I just want to give you my disapproval in, in where you're at with it, is all.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, is there withdrawal on the?
Yeah, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion to deny.
Okay. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, it's okay to disapprove. Please keep in mind that we, we, we wanna forge a relationship, a long-term relationship, and we, we disagree with each other, but we do it in a way to where we respect, you know, 'cause the job, this job is not always easy, as you can tell from the previous vote.
If I've shown my disapproval in any disrespect, I apologize. Not, it's not my intention.
But I will say that if you, if things go well this year and you come back next year and you, and you ask for it and it looks good, then it's easier next year to take a look at that. But right now, we wanna be consistent with what we've told everybody else. I don't wanna get a phone call from 10 people saying, ah, you broke your rule, you didn't do it for me, and you did it for that guy, and then that puts me in the hot seat, so.
So what are you, are you saying that if I do good this year, that you'll look?
There's a possibility, a stronger possibility for next year.
So all of the other times that I've done it good doesn't weigh on this possibility, then?
Well, see, that's the part right there that, that, you know, we're, this council.
I get it, thank you. I get it. I'm just, I'm just asking him where his clarification is with that.
This council here started off, this particular one, started off with a new set of rules. So even though I might have been here a long time and I might remember some of the good things you've done, we started with a, with a fresh slate. And so we, everybody starts off zero and then builds a new, a new castle, and that's just the way it is. And so I'll, I'll support the 1 o'clock, and then I'll also keep an eye on how the long-term relationship is built. If it's built in a good way, you'll have friends on the council. If not, then you'll have problems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just very quickly, weren't you here last year?
I was, yeah.
What, what time did we approve last year?
Last year, um.
Because I think we approved one last year, didn't we?
I think I only put into one that last year.
Yeah.
And it was, it was a different event. This year was, this is what the promotions, I'm in with epic proportions to promotional company here in town that does a lot of huge, they do stuff at Coco Keys, they do stuff at different events, and they do a lot of promotions, and this was their, this is what they brought to the table, and, and I'm just trying to go along with what our plan was. And, you know, if our plan is 1 o'clock, obviously, that's gonna change. You know, I see things in a different light, which is, which is completely fine.
Yeah, but we approved you for 1 o'clock last year, didn't we?
Yes, yes, you did.
That's what I thought, and, because we've been under, we've been under this new regulation, I think, for two, maybe three years. Have you been here the last two or three years?
I've been here for the last two years.
Okay, last two years, and both those times?
About five, five years ago, we did the, we, we requested one as well and, and was approved.
Okay, so I think I'll go with my colleagues this time, and we'll do the 1 o'clock time, and, and we'll review it again. We, we very seldom grant till 2 o'clock.
I understand.
Simply because the lateness of the hour and a couple of other issues related to that, you know, some of them may change at some point, but I think I'll go with my colleagues and.
So in, in the future, should I not be asking for 2?
No, in the future, I think you can. In the future, I think you should ask for 2. I, I, you know, I think you should ask for 2, because that's how long the establishments are allowed to stay, stay open now, so, but, but this year, let's, let's, just as we're compromised this time, let's do 1 o'clock.
No problem.
Okay.
Pauls, we're still evaluating it, too.
Mm-hmm.
It's a flux in terms of what we think should or should not, but we can't change the rule right at this moment.
No, I agree.
That's gotta be done at the committee level.
I agree, and, and I know there's a lot that, that goes into effect of where the establishment is, what's around the establishment. There's no doubt that I understand all the, everything that goes, that's involved. I think we have a unique piece of property and, and it's really hard to bother anybody where we are, and is why I think that it should be allowed, but I, I will amend 1 o'clock, and we'll try to get next year and see if that, if that changes anything.
There's a motion for 1 o'clock, which I'll second. Roll call.
This is amendment to 1 o'clock, okay. Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
As amended.
As amended.
Second, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's approved as amended, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 15 through 17 were held on April 8th. Second, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
15 through 17 are passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items number 18 through 26 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address.
Six to zero.
Identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're adopted, six to zero. Resolution, item number 27, resolution of the amendment to the Exarban MU project at 72nd and Poppleton Street, tax, financing, redevelopment project plan, increasing the project's scope and legal boundaries of the redevelopment site and increasing the TIF alone allocation is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 27 is today. Are there proponents? It's happening.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Again, this is an amendment to a TIF redevelopment project plan for the Exarban mixed-use project, TIF redevelopment project at, between 72nd and 70th Street, Poppleton and Pine. What you see outlined in black is the new boundary for the entire project. There has been a total change to the project scope. It has increased. This is just another view. The blue boundary, again, represents the amended new boundary of the project. The pink or red represents what it was when, when the project plan and the agreement was approved last year. So again, what was added, a few things that were added. The assisted, a living section is here, and that was 87 units, 60 units of assisted, about 27 of memory care. There's a hotel that is here, slated to be the Hampton Inn, and the construction is moving forward on that. The increase in the hotel is, it was 92 rooms, now it's 103 units, or rooms, rather. The commercial piece is here, excuse me, right here, and that was about 10,000 square feet. That has increased to two stories, and it is now 20, about 22,000 square feet. The second floor is mostly office, and the main floor is retail. The anchor tenant is Starbucks. And here again is the assisted living, and the construction is moving forward, or rather will be moving forward on that. The newest piece is this independent living. When we first met with the developer a few years ago, they had said that they were planning to do assisted living as well as independent living, and the independent living would be this full site. However, they were not ready to move forward with the full independent living. So by the time all the financing came together last year, they were ready to move forward with at least 40 units of this independent living, so that is this piece. Let's see, I think I have some renderings here. I think this was in the paper, so you may recall this. This is a rendering of the, the senior living community project. Then this is elevations of the commercial, the south elevation, excuse me, the south elevation, the west, the north, and the east. And then some renderings of the commercial piece, and then to the south is the Hampton Inn or the hotel. So again, this is the first story, first floor with the retail, second floor mostly office. This particular TIF will call for an increase, TIF project will call for an increase in the TIF by 1.3 million, so the total TIF is, excuse me, 5,356,0375, and it is now a total project investment of 42,437,158 dollars. I think that is all I would like to say, and I'd just like to ask for your approval. You do have a representative of the developer here if you have any other questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents?
Sean Cunningham, 604 South 22nd Street. I've been very vocal in my opposition about TIF, and reading what TIF is for, it's for projects that wouldn't have been able to develop otherwise. Now, it looks like 4 million was already approved for this, fine and dandy, but if this is, I mean, this shows negligence on the part of the developer. If they didn't have enough money to have this in the first place, why request an additional million dollars? Why not just scale the project back? The city isn't a bank. You know, I can't go to the city and ask for a loan for my private ventures. We're enabling developers to do this, and this is the kind of spending that led to what bankrupted Detroit. So if we want to continue this practice, you know, it's something to be considered at another date, but 4 million dollars in public money seems like enough to do this project without an extra million dollars. That's all I got.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
One over, 478 North 93rd Street. I'm speaking in behalf of the Hartman Worker Center here in town. We are located in South Omaha, and as he had mentioned, we're not a bank, and due to the fortune that we are giving money out a lot, we just had a developer and the contractor that is involved in this Shamrock Development and Icon Corporation, they have a lien on the Barker loss for $14,000 because a Hispanic worker did not get paid, but they choose to ignore it. This is the stuff we're promoting. I can pick seven or eight projects that we have given TIF money downtown that people have been exploited. This is modern slavery that we're promoting with TIF money. We need to put a stop to it. We need to put something that needs to be governed. The wire apartments, I had 13 workers yesterday show up because they didn't get paid. It's not affecting just all of us. It's affecting the food and their children. We need to come up with something, because they need to come up with, they need to come up with rent by tomorrow, or they're gonna get evicted. These are the developers that we're promoting. This is what we're supporting with TIF money. This is the greatest city I've ever lived. I come from Dallas, El Paso. This is the greatest city that I've ever lived, and let's keep it that way, by stopping exploitation of workers. It happened at the Gretna Building, at the outlet malls, but nobody, nobody looks at it, and I encourage my city councilman to put this and put provisions in it to address the issue. We can be funding projects that they don't pay the bottom worker. I'm the bottom worker. I was a construction worker also. When you make your decision that we need to fund a million and a half more, them people just got cheated $14,000, and it was eight of them. Who's gonna fund them? How about if we give them a little bit of TIF money? Payroll fraud everywhere downtown with TIF money. We're tired of getting these cases. Two weeks ago, they came from Lincoln, 18 framers who were brought from Louisiana, and they were stuck here. Who's gonna give them TIF money? I take the challenge to any city. We live in the greatest city. Let's keep it that way. And I encourage all our councilmen, put provisions when we give them their money. This is our money, and it's our city. We don't make jobs for Omaha. These projects that they were fighting for, I can tell you, 90% of these apartment complexes are built with out-of-town contractors. are built with out-of-town contractors. Please look into where that money goes. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other opponents today that want to speak? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson.
I'll just take the benign question first. Go ahead, come on up, Bridgette, Ms. Hadley. Go ahead.
Bridgette Hadley, City Planning. I just wanted to address real quick in terms of TIF not being necessarily public money where we just give it away. The way TIF works, with 95% to 99% of our TIF projects, the developers come forward and they have to receive, get the TIF money from a bank. That money that we say the project will support, so for example, the 5,356, we say the project will support it, meaning that as it is developed, those tax revenues will come in at this amount over a 15-year period. Those dollars have to be financed, and the developers go to a financing source. They have various financing sources. It could be a traditional bank, it could be HUD financing, and in this case HUD is involved. So just wanted to be clear that it's not the city just giving away the money. First of all, they have to earn it, and what I mean by that is, if that project does not go forward, if it does not fully develop, the tax revenues do not fully develop, and therefore the TIF amount that we set, we approved, does not go out. And then in terms of his concerns about maybe contractors not being paid, that's the first I've heard of it. So I don't, I'm not aware of that. I think there could be provisions to help with that, but I would leave that maybe to our attorney to maybe address specifically.
Okay. Turning to the City Law Department, we have, we have a Human Rights and Relations Department, don't we?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, yes, we do. Complaints can always be filed there.
So this gentleman can actually start, start an investigation?
Well, but those, they're limited to what they can investigate. It's the typical discrimination areas, housing, race, those type of things, as opposed to non-payment. Non-payment's a different issue.
What, what relief does he have?
Always file a suit against the contractor, which isn't a great option, and I understand that. And I think, I think he raises a very good point, and we probably ought to look into it. I'm not sure what the resolution is or how we control that, but it's certainly worth looking into.
I want to make sure that the non-payment is not based upon his race.
Well, if that's the allegation, then a complaint can be made. But it's got to be based upon race and not some other reason. Otherwise it would be benign.
I get the impression that he's speaking about he and some Hispanic workers.
And if that's the case, if it's limited to Hispanics, then, you know, maybe you have a, potentially a case there. There are a lot of facts involved in making that type of an allegation when it comes to paying or not paying, and why the person wasn't paid.
Thank you. Is there some way that you can point him into a direction, or at least provide some kind of, you know, direction?
I, I think, again, I'd have to defer to my legal representative, the City Law Department, in terms of how that will be handled. The only thing I can think of is, in our redevelopment agreements, I mean, that's where we have our enforcement power, if you will. And if we know about those things, again, the legal specifics, I would leave to our, my attorney, the city attorney, to address. But if we knew about that, we might be able to withhold the payments of the TIF until those things were resolved. But again, that's only something that the city attorney can address if that can be done legally.
Yeah, Paul Kratz, City Attorney, let me jump in, or that might be more difficult than you think, because you have a bank involved that's expecting the flow of money. And if we arbitrarily withhold money based upon some allegations, we're going to have some liability issues. So I would suggest that's probably not the way to go about doing it. There may be another way of doing it, Councilmember. I've just, I haven't thought about it, and we need to give it some thought.
Will you at least take his phone number and be in touch with him?
Sure, we can.
Before you do that, I want to ask a couple.
Go ahead. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, let me say, this is not the first time I've heard this. Actually, this is about the fifth time I've heard it. And I know two African-American contractors who have been put out of business, one to the extent that they're back home with their mom because they didn't get paid by, by, by a company. My question is more to the Planning Department, though, because I've been told by some of, some of the larger minority contractors that we do have a system that we call lien releases. In other words, when it's a, and this is, this is only when it's a city project. And those lien releases seem to say to me, because the previous planning director here mentioned those to me, that we, that we do, that, that the city can do that. And what a lien release is, Dr. Thompson, is if, if the contractor's with the city and they finish certain phases of the project, they have to pay their subs before they get their, before they get their money from the city. And I'm told that that's already a legal practice, and I, and I'm just, I wanted to ask the planning director if that, if that is, because I have, I have heard this problem on a number of occasions, and I'm not clear as to why sometimes the city uses these lien releases to make sure their subs get paid, and sometimes we don't.
James Hill, City Planning. Yes, with our rehabilitation project using federal funds, we request a lien waiver before we process payments. However, that does not present, prevent fraud or any other illegal activities, so there still is other remedies that might be necessary. This is a very complicated issue I think we're talking about here, and I think it might be something better to discuss after the council meeting, when we have a chance to kind of go over some of these issues. Sit down with the Law Department and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, I was considering an amendment to the Small Emerging Business Ordinance, because I've, this is, I've, I know of at least five instances, Dr. Thompson, and in every instance, that they were people of color. So your concern is, is well noted, and I think to a large extent justified. But I think we do have a remedy, but I think we need to work through it a little bit, because my understanding is, some of the minority contractors already, if they get a prime, if they get a prime contract there with the city, they are subject to lien releases. And, and, and we've got to, we've got to level the playing field a little bit. And that's why, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but that was my, you know, because I've been dealing with this for a while, and I know some people that have been damaged by this. And, and I think we need to discuss this further, and I think there, there may need to be an amendment to the Small Emerging Business Ordinance when you do business with the city, that the city has the right to withhold the check until they're sure that your subs have been paid. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Number four lights on this item.
Motion approved.
Second, roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray, Milton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted six to zero. Item number eight, resolution that the mayor is authorized to sign the attached settlement agreement concluding the litigation, 1126 North 11th LLC, City of Omaha.
Public hearing on number 28 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray, Milton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted six to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item number 29, special ordinance allowing special tax for weeds, group number 2014-03. We have an amendment.
Public hearing on number 29 was held on April 8th.
Of the amendment?
Roll, roll call. Pauls. Let's tighten things up a little bit.
Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray, Milton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Second.
Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray, Milton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed as amended seven, six to zero. Item number 30, special ordinance allowing special tax for removal of litter, group number 201404. There is an amendment.
Public hearing was held on April 8th.
Motion approved.
The amendment.
Motion approved, the amendment.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray, Milton. Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended.
Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray, Milton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed as amended, six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing gen. items 31 through 33 shall be held on third reading. Ordinance on second reading, we've already taken 34, 35, as ordinance clarifies that the appropriating the use of property located at 4227 Burdette Street for the consolidated plan.
Public hearing on number 35 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? 35?
We did 34 earlier today.
Public hearing on 35 is closed.
Item 36, ordinance clarifies that's the appropriating 2627 Grant Street for the implementation of the consolidated plan.
Public hearing on number 36 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 37, ordinance approving the agreement for the sale of city-owned real property at 2121 Locust Street.
Public hearing on number 37 is today. Are there proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing gen. item number 38 through 41 shall be held on third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing gen. items number 42 through 44 shall be held on the second reading.
Motion to go into executive session to discuss labor negotiations.
Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray, Milton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Now you need to say that.
The City Council will now adjourn into executive session to discuss labor negotiations.
437.[1027.07]
Do you have a motion to come out of executive session?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Milton?
Mr. President?
The Cady and Reynolds Organization is a nonprofit organization that attempts to stop teens from distracted driving by educating and creating awareness. For more information, visit www.safetudedriving.org.